The management here. You all are going to want to go to the primary school section which starts on page 11. I was noticing as I was flipping, you know, Allison said, "Well, look at my pie chart. It's all blue." But if you look at all of the school buildings, their pie charts are pretty blue, too. They're very...
Why is it so much more blue than hers?
Very people-centric. And it's only if you look at a place that's more district-wide, like if you look at curriculum and assessment on page 57, because Monique is providing resources and supplies and software to the whole district. Hers looks a little bit different. Todd's looks a little bit different. But most of the schools are super people-headed. And now you know where to go and she'll tell you all about it.
The only thing I would add to that is when we talk about the fact that 96.6% of K2's budget is personnel, that gives you a sense of how much discretionary spending is actually available to our school leaders and to our teachers. And so this really requires us to reach out to families and anyone who's a parent in the community, you know how many times or how often you are asked to supplement your child's education, whether it's through user fees, or supplies, or field trips, or parking passes, or the laptop payment. So I think that's one important thing for our community to understand is that the burden is not even across, the burden of providing a thorough and efficient education to our students is not even across our community. Parents are actually supplementing the budget annually at a significant cost. I mean, I have yet to be able to nail down all the things we ask parents to do in terms of contributing to our day-to-day operations, but it's significant. So that's another important factor for us to keep in mind as we're now going into the schools. And so we're going to go right in phase level order, starting with K2. Anne and Kelly might combine for their 20 minutes, but they both have 20 minutes if they need it, and then we have questions also. All right. Go ahead, Anne.
All right. Thank you. So K2, we continue to have the challenge of three buildings and great distances across the town. So our challenge of professional development and having time for all kindergarten teachers or all first grade teachers to be together is one of our greatest challenges. And so we continue to try to find as many opportunities as we can to meet together, make the most of our staff development and professional development opportunities. I feel like sometimes I should have a satellite office here at Wentworth because we meet here so much because it's such a fabulous place. We all fit. Everybody travels sort of equal distances, so it makes sense. And they're always so gracious to have us. And it does provide for cross-grade level groupings as well, from second to third, which is always a nice thing to be able to do as well. But our greatest challenge is time, and we just do not have enough professional opportunities all together to do that. And so that's the time crunch portion of the slide there. So we are, as you know, we have been working with the units of study for reading and writing now, and the reading implementation is full-on, and teachers are loving it. They're seeing the connection between their units of study for reading and writing very clearly and deeply. It doesn't feel as new as the writing did a year, two years ago, because it connects so well together. I think teachers are constantly amazed at how far their kids are progressing. And as Monique said, you know, a few years ago, the end of kindergarten expectation was to be exposed to 21 sight words, and now it's, that's expected them to know them, not just be exposed, not just to have seen them, not just to have heard about them, but to know them by January. We're constantly rethinking about what is our academic support threshold, because it's six months behind where we expect kids to be. And now our six months behind is above where our kids ever were expected to be three years ago. So is that behind? Because that was above grade level a few years ago. So it's this recalibration in our head all the time of, wait, are they struggling or are they really doing pretty well? Wait, what is it? And we're just so amazed at how far they're going in their reading and writing, especially with this new curriculum. And, you know, we infused a huge number of new books into each classroom library this past summer, and I think we're expecting to infuse, I see Monique nodding, yes, that's what I was hoping she was doing, to infuse more this year. And kids just are loving it. The nonfiction books, animals, you know, reading about real things and not just story books. Not that fiction doesn't have a huge and important place, but we need a variety of books, and we just didn't have them, and now we do. So it's really awesome to see kids reading, to hear kids talking about strategies about reading, and writing, and math, and to connect to the video that Julie showed earlier about it's not what you know, it's knowing how to find it out. And that's what we're teaching these kids with these curriculums, is the strategies to figure things out. So it's the strategies to figure out new words, the strategies to figure out how to figure out what that means, or what that picture is, or, and it's not just learning to read, it's learning to problem-solve, learning how to figure things out that you don't know, whether it's a new word, or a new concept, or a new animal, or, it's just so exciting to hear all the academic talking that's going on in classes these days. To also connect with what Allison was saying, we do see every year a number of kiddos that come in without any sort of identification, without any sort of assistance, with some significant needs. And all three buildings have this issue, so our behavior specialist is spread very thin across the three schools, even though she's now all K2. And I don't know what we would do without her, because she spends a nice chunk of time with these kiddos and tries to figure out what's going on with them, what are their motivations, what are their interests, what's driving force behind their behavior, whether it's positive behavior or unexpected behavior, and then tries to put a plan in place that we can follow in time until they either are identified or not, but to have success in school and to keep the disruption and safety, disruption at a minimum and safety at a maximum. So that is a huge part of the time we spend at K2 from leadership perspective, and that takes away resources that we would be using otherwise. I mean, as an example, in my building, I have two kiddos that my building ed techs are with 100% of the time right now, who are not identified, who are just regular five-year-old kiddos, which means my office has nobody in it to cover IEPs, to cover unfilled subpositions, to cover other things, unless I bring in more subs. And then we're at this tipping point, like, when do we get more subs than we have real employees? Not quite there, but it's significant this year especially. So that is a challenge for us, as kindergartners and kiddos in first and second grade. I'm not saying that doesn't happen either, but it's primarily the kindergartners. So, oh, I don't do this slide. So we're very fortunate that our population isn't growing significantly. We are actually in a very stable sort of place, but we are not asking for any major new investments in any people other than the principal, and I'll let, I think I'm going to let district talk about that, right? Central office is talking about that position more than I will. But we always can use, you know, more time for professional development, more time for our one-to-one technology. We have these fabulous Chromebooks for every student, and we use them as much as we can. But again, it's a matter of teachers need to know how to use them better in order to use them more and to use them more effectively. And we haven't had as much time as we would like to be able to get into that, so we're always looking for those opportunities as well. We're continuing on our path of student-centered learning and goal-setting and students learning those meta-cognitive skills of what am I learning, why am I learning it, and how am I going to know when I get there? What do I need to do to get there, those steps? And so we're starting in kindergarten with setting goals and with their parents or with their teachers, and then tracking that progress. And hopefully that will build, and as kids get older and as they get up into the upper grades, the teachers at Wentworth will feel the benefit of that, and then as they go on, they'll all see it happening, and, oh my gosh, they couldn't do this a few years ago, but you can really see the progression. So I think that's pretty much our whole idea right now. And, you know, our next year, we're looking forward to a new leadership structure and continuing all the things that our teachers are doing in their PLTs, especially with student-centered learning, and also mindfulness. Again, five, six, and seven-year-olds learning that they are in control of their bodies, their minds, their learning, and it all is, you know, the whole child, not just reading and writing and math. And I promised I would be short, so if you have questions.
Chris? So, Anne, could you give us an idea of K2 or KFC registration at this point? Are you seeing a slight tick-up, or are you seeing less average, normal, what are you seeing for new year olds? I know we get things through the course of the year, but are we seeing a general trend up, or...
Not a trend up at this point. Pretty flat right now. So I think the first grade class, our current first grade class is on the smaller side. So when you look at K2 in general right now, the first grade class overall is just a little bit smaller, and I can't explain that, but other than it just is what it is. But our INC, the ones we registered last week, is about the same number as we have now, and, you know, we always expect about a 10% to 15% increase between now and August. So given that variable, we're looking at about similar class size to what we have now, which is right at about 200.
So do you tend to see, we've got a lot of new housing stock coming to the Scarborough, do you anticipate seeing kind of mid-year starts as well, or do you think most people will kind of either move in and wait till they get, do you tend to see a spike at the beginning of the year, or have you seen in the past, like, if a new project comes online, you might get...
We certainly see a little spike at the beginning of the year, you know, the August, late August registrations. But there hasn't been a month in this year that I haven't had new students coming in. I think I had one start today. I had one start, you know, people are like, "You have kids starting after February vacation?" And it's like, well, yeah, I don't think jobs dictate, you know, waiting till June to move, or, so, yeah, we had kids starting at Christmas, we have kids starting all the time. So I think we've had a net, only a net gain of maybe eight this year, but we have had, and that's happened at all three schools, we just looked at that enrollment. And, you know, looking at enrollment, I think, you know, when you see the benefits of a building like Wentworth, you can see what would we get if we had a consolidated K2, you know, the pros and cons of that. We could save at least four classroom teaching positions if we were all in one building, and our class sizes would be much more evenly distributed, and, you know, we wouldn't have 20 kids in the first grade classes at Pleasant Hill, but 15 at Blue Point, just because they're across town. We could consolidate them and have much more even distribution, and, you know, have fewer classrooms overall without overcrowding anybody. So as much as I love my little school, and we all love our neighborhood schools, I think that we can create intimacy in K2 education and more efficiency at the same time. I don't think they mutually exclude each other.
And I think it also would provide more professional development opportunities for the teachers to collaborate and work together.
Absolutely.
And so we actually are, every month, we look at our enrollment, and we're also looking at projections for next year. That was a big part of the initial pre-budget work that we did. So just today, Joanne and Anne and I were looking at, you know, what do our K2 projections look like? So this year, currently, we have 201 current kindergartners, 177 first graders, and 225 second graders. And then next year, we're projecting, currently, we have 174 kids enrolled in K, but remember what Anne said, that 10% to 15%, you know, bump that we get at this time of registrations, we'll have 201 first graders and 177 second graders. And so one thing that we do know is that we will have one less kindergarten section at Blue Point School, but that we also know that we need one additional first grade section just because of the size of the classes. So we are always looking at those numbers, and we'll continue to look at them over the summer as families move in and out. But when I do a historical analysis of our enrollment, right about this time of year, our enrollment tends to go up about 20 to 30 students. So we start a little bit lower than we end, and that seems to be a trend over the past few years. Another question for Anne about the primary school?
Well, actually, just more directed towards you.
Sure.
You mentioned that at Blue Point, you were seeing the shift where you were going to lose one K classroom and add a first grade classroom. So historically, have you, since this is your first year, they got to look at it, but historically, have you had that occur more often at Blue Point, or is it very, does it vary from school to K2, since that's a school?
I mean, you can answer, but I think just knowing the K2 phase as well as I do, I can tell you that about six years ago, Blue Point was our largest school at 300, and it's just taken a nosedive in enrollment. There were 15 homerooms and, you know, over 300 kids, and now we're at 11 homerooms and just about 200 kids there. So, you know, the boom out Broad Turn Road sort of calmed down after they put the moratorium on housing starts or put the limit on it, and now we're seeing that lifted and things going back up a little bit. And obviously, with the housing starts, with multiple family homes and apartments and different kinds of, not just, you know, mid-range, not starter homes, but, you know, larger homes on larger pieces of property out that were being built, you know, a few years ago.
And this is completely anecdotal, but at the kindergarten information night, we had an amazing turnout, and the Wentworth camp was full of families, and then they broke up into, you know, neighborhoods. And so I was just listening in and supporting Lisa Roberts, who's our lead teacher at Pleasant Hill, and talking to Pleasant Hill families. And of the families that were there, it seemed like many of them, this was their first student coming into Pleasant Hill, and they had a younger sibling or two at home. So I think that that'll be, we'll see some fluctuation in that neighborhood.
All those families that have the grown kids now that are at college, and so the young families that are in their homes.
So, you know, we, it's definitely, I think Pleasant Hill has had the most stable population over time, and it just depends on, and we shifted lines as well to accommodate. So, you know, just because Blue Point's numbers are low, it's because I did take a neighborhood away from them a few years ago, so that those kids were still there, it wouldn't be nearly as big of a drop, but.
Multiple times.
And then I would just add a little bit of information about the K2 principal at this point while we're talking about the primary schools. So you may know that currently, we have two principals and an assistant principal that support our three K2 schools. That was an alternative, like Plan B, I think is the language I hear, an alternative plan that was meant to be temporary a few years ago when we were transitioning into the new Wentworth, if I'm saying this accurately. If you're free to help me. And so the feedback that I've been getting during my entry process in the one-on-one interviews that I had, but then also visiting the schools and talking with the leadership is that this has been an extreme challenge for us to provide the quality of programming that we know all of our primary schools need and deserve. And one of the things I like to say is that you can't really schedule student needs. You can't, you know, plan for a principal to be there Tuesday afternoon, and the kids wait for you to get there before they need you. When they need you, they need you. And so having been a principal of a small primary school, I know how busy it can be and how important it is to have leadership in the building for the students, the staff, and the parents. And so in this budget, through some realignment of funds, we are proposing that we bring back that principal position, but we're enhancing the job duties a bit. So Pleasant Hill is our smallest primary school with currently 174 students, maybe 175 today. And so what, when Anne Cass retires, who's the assistant principal at the end of this year, we want to replace, not replace her, but to fill the position with a full-time principal, whose primary job will be to be the principal of Pleasant Hill School, but who will also serve in that improvement strategist role across the phase level. So again, realizing the benefits of having that strong instructional leadership to support the leadership at the high school this year with Catherine Ruby joining, Catherine Ruby joining our team. One of the budgetary requests was that we need one of those, we need a position like that at K5 to really do this work. We need a position like that at the middle school. And so we are solving the principal situation or maximizing this opportunity of the retirement to bring back that full-time principal, but also requiring this person to be a really strategic planner who can help develop a data or an evidence-based culture that is really focused on student learning and can help us continually grow. So that'll be one of the primary functions of that principal as well, along with working really closely with Anne and Kelly, our current principals, to support all of the teachers in their professional development and maximizing that protected professional development time that we had, so we get the best return on our investment. And so you'll hear about the middle school, the similar position in the middle school that also comes through realignment, no additional resources requested, and then at the high school, where we are requesting some additional resources. So my optimistic hope is that you're all like, "What about Wentworth? Don't we need that position here at Wentworth?"
Oh, I'll take it.
And not to steal any of Kelly's thunder, but the answer is yes, desperately. This is a huge building with a lot of kids, and they're doing amazing work, but we believe that this position is just, is essential here. But as Kelly starts to talk about the needs of her phase level, you'll see that the enrollment is projected to be consistent, almost exactly, to the number of students that we currently have. So our plan is to plant the seed and have you know how important this position is, but be able to come back with you next year with some rock solid evidence that shows the benefit of this position, because we are anticipating a little decline in enrollment next year at Wentworth, and we have some anticipated retirements that we feel we might be able to again realign and make that a reality for Wentworth. Unless you'd like to accelerate that plan, we're also open to that as well. Any questions about that?
I just have one clarification. Maybe I misunderstood. So you said that Anne is staying at Eight Corners, and Kelly Mullin-Martin is staying at Pleasant Hill.
So she's currently, no, she'll be at Blue Point?
Okay, that was what I thought you said.
Yeah. I don't know if I actually said that, but the position that we, and we have posted it as an anticipated opening, knowing that we can't hire until the budget is approved, but we wanted to make sure we were recruiting the best staff we could. We posted it as an anticipated opening for Pleasant Hill School and K2 Improvement Strategist, so that we are really clear about the type of skills we are looking for in our next year.
So then Kelly Mullin-Martin is going to...
Full-time, yeah. She'll be the full-time principal at Blue Point. And just to add to that a little bit, too, it's been really challenging for her and Anne to navigate and to really support those two buildings, because, you know, buildings have their own culture and their own climate, and it really requires that level of personal leadership to be successful.
Thank you.
And Julie alluded to it, but the temporary situation of that leadership model was a few years ago, when we were really thinking we were going to be consolidating at least one of the, two of the K2s into one, and so it was sort of, oh, well, we'll sort of move our way toward that in the leadership team, and now it seems like we're quite a bit further away from that type of move. And in the meantime, we really need to give those buildings the leadership that they need.
Absolutely. Any other questions about primary schools? That's the primary. Well, we continue to be absolutely thrilled with our fabulous facility and all of the learning opportunities that the school opens up for our students. And our staff has worked incredibly hard now in our third year to make the transition and really capitalize on all of those investments that the community has made in our building. So as Julie mentioned, there is no projected change for enrollment for 17, 18 at Wentworth School, so I didn't have any of those flexible options that other phases have for next year. However, we're constantly examining our existing resources, and we'll continue to do so with an eye toward two things. One being that, as Anne mentioned, the second grade class, the incoming second grade class will have about a class fewer students, so there's some potential reallocation for 18, 19 at Wentworth School. And additionally, our demographic is a bit unique in that over the next several years, there are projected to be at least a handful of retirements over the next several years here at Wentworth School. So that just creates opportunity and options. So for this year, however, the student-centered budget, I am deferring to 18, 19. So the two positions that you'll hear a lot more about, and you just heard a bit about the, I think I used the language of last week, interrupting channel learning.
That's true.
It's been updated recently.
Improvement Strategist.
Improvement Strategist is the title that we're all championing at this time. So I do think that that is a really big need for Wentworth School, because in our current structure, it's three school leaders funneling students to two school leaders in a giant, in a giant school with a lot of complex and diverse needs. So we're doing just fine, and we're hanging in there, and, but I just think of all the potential that this school and this staff has, so to, to improve. And the other investment, the other future investment is, we'll hear a bit more about this from Barb. She has included a bridge teacher position at the principal this year and has seen such tremendous gains and a huge return on investment for this position. And we face similar challenges here at Wentworth School. The position in a nutshell, and I don't want to steal Barb's thunder, is to support regular students when they return to school from a significant illness, injury, absences, if they're new to district, and we have an extremely rigorous curriculum, and they're just behind due to lack of instruction in that area. So it's sort of like a quick intensive care and coaching model, and with the goal of returning students to their classroom feeling really confident and up to speed. So those are future investments to think about. The mission critical for this year, which would require no budget impact for Wentworth School, obviously, we continue to really require professional learning and staff training. That's something that has been an investment with our new curriculum. We have consulted regularly to work with our teachers from, with our teachers' college reading and writing curriculum. I could echo all of the things that Anne has said about the improvements that we're seeing in our students and how far they have come. And I'm, I sometimes say a recovering middle school teacher, but a former middle school teacher, and what I see the students at Wentworth doing are the skills and things that were definitely happening in middle school five years ago. So it's really exciting, and the energy that the students bring and the delight and curiosity that they share every day with this work has been energizing for all of us. So continues to be a focus. The other small piece is something that I'm really proud of, the work that we've done here this year, is that we've made a transition that doesn't sound maybe necessarily groundbreaking, but our goal was every student, every day, out to recess. It is not, it's not incentive for good behavior, it's not an option. It's as essential a part of eight, nine, or 10-year-olds' day as reading instruction. So we've really taken a huge step in that direction. I think what was happening just for the public is some just well-intentioned historical practices, like, "Oh, you've been absent a couple days, just stay in for recess and I'll get you caught up," or in response to unexpected behavior, "Stay in, let's talk about this," or even clubs. Some clubs have taken place historically in lieu of recess. So a couple of things that we've done, we redesigned our schedule this year, and it's been fabulous, and we're really excited about those changes. One of the things that we included was rise time, so we mediate, improve, stretch, and enrich, and that time is designated for all of those things that felt could only previously take place in lieu of recess. So the only, the only thing, the only group that stayed in for recess this year for six days, over six... days, over six recesses over six weeks, was Chorus. You can't, you can't meet at lunch and practice a song. So that, we, we made an administrative waiver for that this year, but that leads me to the investment that we need. And it's really not an investment, it would be offset by anticipated retirement savings. I'd like to move two clubs that currently take place within the school day at Wentworth, Chorus being one of them, because as I said, you can't well sit and have pizza at the same time. And also our K-Kids. K-Kids has historically met over lunch and recess, it's been compacted to just a lunch meeting. It's A, not enough harm for them to do the really great work that they do as a service club. And B, it is, enrollment is hindered by time, space, and available staffing. So if we move this to an after-school club, and this stipend would allow for growth and have it be a more open and more opportunity for students. So those are the two small things that we're thinking about for next year. So what will we continue to do? We are going to continue to focus on all of the wonderful previous investments that have been made at this phase level. I spoke already to the literacy learning and professional development, all of the things, those three things, units of study for reading and for writing, the huge investment in building classroom libraries, the shift in instruction that has taken place as a result of that, that students can shop right in their classroom for a book that is at their reading level and have so many options of genres and titles, has been really accelerated our reading and writing exponentially. And then Words Their Way is our spelling and vocabulary curriculum. And all of this, all of this has happened within the last two years while transitioning into a new state-of-the-art building, while learning how to work the lights, the copiers, and be a one-to-one school. Our teachers are exhausted, but amazing. And they've, they've done a really incredible job. So the professional development and support that is still required for them, I don't ever want to lose emphasis on that. The other recent investment in this state-of-the-art facility is that we want to leverage the resources of our four STEM labs that were so cleverly included in the building design. And, and two years ago, we added one STEM teacher position, and this year, we have the second STEM teacher position, which means that all students, all year, receive STEM instruction weekly. And our, our teachers are doing an incredible job with integrating, working with our instructional coach, working with classroom teachers, working, the things that are happening in STEM classes will boggle your mind. Every time I go in to spend time in there, Joanne was in there just the other day, I'm learning about all of these discrete sets of code and the language of computing and the eight-year-olds are just, you know, able to do it no problem. And they're talking about nested loops and how to, it's really, it's really phenomenal. Most recently, I just have to brag on this project a little bit. The STEM teachers collaborated with some of our garden champions and they are, they secured funding through an SEF grant, so shout out to SEF also, to create this decorative fence gate in the garden space. And the design was done by the fifth graders in STEM class, so they made prototypes, they used pipe cleaners, they did some 3D printing of different portions of the design, they used an engineering design process to create it. Then there was a collaboration with PATHS, the Portland Arts and Technology High School, and those students welded the fence. And it's a collaborative project with our art teachers, because the fence is going to serve as a permanent display for interchangeable art, like 3D sculptures. And we brought in an artist-in-residence who's going to work with our students to create these amazing sculptures that move with the wind and they can be changed out seasonally. So talk about integrating all of the disciplines and that is, and that is a direct result of investment in these positions. So our, our theme this year has been, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. And that was, that's an African proverb. And a lot of our work has had to go fast over two years, like let's get it in, get settled, get it done. And we are definitely in that refinement phase right now of reflecting on all the great things that have happened and slowing down a bit and thinking about, okay, what are, what are our strategic next steps? So with these incremental investments that have taken place and with what we hope to have over the next couple of years, I know that we will continue to, with that really good work and go far together. Any questions for Kelly, the head of Wentworth? Jackie?
Could you go to plant sunflowers?
Well, I hope the Kiwanis will come and help us plant sunflowers. Yes, that is part of our plan. So when the incoming third graders come for their step-up day, one of the stops on the tour is planting a sunflower seed in the garden. And then when they come back in the fall, it's all grown up and waiting for them. It's just a really sweet and symbolic moment for them.
It was incredible. The children were incredible. May I tell you this once? This little girl took her sunflower plant and put it in the, in the hole, she did this, and then she looked around and she found a stick and a little pebble. And the teacher said to her, what are you doing? She said, well, I want to know where mine is when I come to school in the fall. I mean, just those types of experiences, just that day with those second graders was absolutely incredible. Just one of the best days I've ever had, quite frankly.
Any other questions about Wentworth? All right. Can you pass the clicker pal to Barb?
So I would like to speak to the bridge position, which was an investment new this year. It's an innovative academic program that we developed out of a need that Kelly spoke to a little bit, regular rent students who needed support in one way or another, and we decided to use that to help them. So this person supports academic, also supports the academic center at tech. I've always had a study center, but it's only been at tech. So now, these two people work together in the same room. And the bridge teacher also supports the study center at tech. And they use a coaching model with their students. And again, it's all around executive functioning. It's a tier-two program for regular rent students who need specific instruction just in executive functioning. Back to the bridge, bridge services regular rent students to these specific short-term interventions and those new to the middle school. So she, name's Amy, she's right there in the picture. She takes all students new to the middle school, assesses them, gives them a star math and ELE test, assesses what they need and works with them until she can get them back into math and ELE classes. Captain Kelly, both Kelly and Anne spoke to the fact that our curriculum is very rigorous. Students coming in from other states, other places are not prepared for our curriculum. So a student that comes in in January cannot go right into a math program or they would be lost. Most kids need some support. And that's what happens to these kids. Most of them stay between two weeks and a month depending on the new student. We have worked with six students with concussions this year, who again, have no other support system for them. Twelve with prolonged medical illnesses and three emotional challenges. So again, these students were able to meet their needs in bridge and not go into special ed services, which typically will happen. Now, in the academic side of this program, this tier-two, currently they're working with 19 students. We don't want students to stay in academic center and be just a holding place for those kiddos. It's about direct instruction. So typically, those students stay between six weeks to a quarter. If they're any longer than that and we cannot make any gains, we do end up moving into special referrals. We have five in the referral process now. But this bridge teacher works with the teachers and the regular rent classrooms and they work together to develop interventions and work together to, to write the referrals. It's been going very well. They have switched their focus to code for coaching model, so that in past, teachers would work harder than the kids sometimes. And we're trying to reverse that practice and really make, give the kids some ownership and control. Other highlights and successes at the middle school? By David, in that situation you had to deal with at the middle school today, but a highlight would be David's work with restorative practices with teachers and students, the athletic eligibility using habits of work and learning, a schedule, which I am still so thankful for, which allows time for teachers to work together. Our teachers do not work alone, ever, at the middle school. And our RISE program, so you can have a seat, there's a nice vertical articulation between Wentworth and the middle school. Both have a RISE program. And next year, we're looking on an advisory-type program, so it'll be again, a missed transition to the high school fall year. I did want to bring up the building safety at tech, which I would, and you just kind of think, think less to talk about this person every year, is only in a tech position, but it is desperately needed for those kiddos to go back and forth all day long at the middle school. It is still a concern. So this is complicated.
But exciting.
Pardon?
But exciting.
But exciting. So I hope I can explain this well, Julie and I spoke to someone a bit. So I have some retirements and I have some teachers in superpopulation, which is going to allow for this realignment. It has been, as long as I have been here, we don't know, we had two librarians for 3,000 students, which is shocking. The middle school has never had a full-time librarian. We have been lucky to have a librarian one day a week. It's not enough. Although the librarian that we shared with the high school is fabulous and she's made great strides. I cannot imagine what had happened if I had a full-time librarian and a specialist at the middle school. We really need to fully develop the learning commons. We're slowly working our way there. We have an acre space in our little space, but we have nowhere to man that space or to use it with students. Sorry, I'm looking for this, this, this person. In place of a retirement would be the tech teacher. In order to keep my unique schedule in place, so that teachers can continue to work together, I need a place for these kiddos to go. And I need to continue teaching Denver's tech skills. And we're seeing that what we're teaching our students, after you've heard from Kelly, is very different than what we have been teaching them in the past. We're going to move to computer science curriculum. And my, I have a .5 tech IC. She's also a .5 teacher. So she is going to pick up computer science. The library specialist will also pick up some computer science pieces, as well as teaching our sixth graders a library curriculum, which they have not had in years at the middle school. So it could be very exciting. Additionally, it supports the high school. The ASK really informs us that they need a full-time librarian. Is that right, David?
Yes.
Yes, because you've been telling me about that for a long time. I've saved a .2 FTE to support that work at the middle school. I have 11 classrooms in the sixth grade. They, my, my population is 21 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio. I have 12 classrooms in the seventh grade. If I lose one classroom teacher, I will remain at 21 to 1. If I keep the 12 in eighth grade, it will still stay 21 to 1, it's a larger class. So I am able to lose one classroom teacher. I can reallocate that teacher to have another IC-type position. So right now, I have humanities, I have an ELE instructional coach and I have a math instructional coach. I've always wanted those to be humanities instructional coach and sciences instructional coach. So they would work with all of the, just the staff in my building, which is not what happens now. I have to share one who works also at the high school. And I also need a group of strategists to guide all of the work that we're doing at the middle school. The work that teachers are doing is very complex. It's, even from five years ago, it's very different. Teachers are working really hard, they need, they need help and support as we move into participative-based education. They need help developing scales, doing their own curriculum, doing common assessments together, developing those, the strategies that will work for all the students in classrooms. That is not busy work. They need help and support doing that. So I am looking forward that group of strategists to guide the transition to participative-based education, provide services to teachers, and also to work cross-phase. So that person would also make sure that there's vertical articulation, work with the high school group of strategists, work with Wentworth and K2 group of strategists to work on that vertical articulation. And that will also help my ICs continue their work with their teachers. But my ICs also work with the math support and reading support classrooms. I only have one teacher in each, so they also support that work. They, with students and they help with data and they make sure that everybody has the data that everybody, that teachers need to make decisions about kids and about instruction. Other questions? Did I just say anything, Julie?
I think that just, one of the things that we looked at, you know, back in our pre-budget kind of prep work that we did as a K-12 Leadership Council was enrollment. And so it's, it's one of those decisions that we had to make. Do we increase class sizes in order to better support the work that's happening? And so what I really, you know, Barb was really asked to go back to her building and reanalyze everything and come back with a proposal. And so what you see in this mission-critical budget here, which is actually a .2 FTE savings that we are, that allows us to offset the needs at the high school this year, took a lot of work and a lot of strategic thinking. It meant that she had to rethink her schedules, it meant that she had to rethink the way students are assigned to different classes. And you know, that's a challenge, but I'm so proud of her willingness and open-mindedness to think really critically about what are the real needs and how can we, how can we meet those needs within our existing resources? So I think that it's super exciting and I could talk for hours about what this is going to mean for the middle school, but I won't do that. But I do just want to bring your attention again to, you know, the blue sheet, so that you're seeing exactly how this works out in dollars and cents. So a lot of improvements to just what we're going to be able to offer our students at the middle school without asking for an increase in funding there, so.
And I did want to add, we spend a lot of time and effort growing our teacher leaders. And this is going to, this, all that work benefits us. And I have teachers, me and Joanne, Marie work with U.S.M., these teachers are in Co-Force, Leadership Co-Force, and I have teachers ready to stick into these roles because of the work that we do with U.S.M.
And we really look at this improvement strategist position as a way that is to build an internal leadership pipeline. So when we do, when we do post these as anticipated openings in six, eight, and nine, 12, it will be an internal posting only, because obviously, we can't bring someone in from the outside and without adding to our budget. So we're really excited to give this opportunity to our teachers. And I know there's already a buzz about the district in hopes that, you know, this will become a successful part of our budget and we'll be able to make it happen. And it also goes back to what I was saying earlier about how the job has shifted. You know, the role of the principal, all of the things that a principal has always had to do still exists, but now they also have all of these other new tasks at hand. Think similarly about the role of a superintendent. As I start to work towards this creative funding model, I have to have a whole different mindset than, and a whole different skill set than a superintendent who was just working within, you know, a traditional budget would have to have. And so I don't have that yet, but I'm working on it. And so I think for our principals, when you think about 714 kids in the school, you know, and you only- know, and you only have Barb and Dave leading all of that work, Dave's really taking a strong lead on the student support side of things. Barb's obviously making sure that the buses run on time and everybody has their meals and the classes, the teachers have what they need. It's more like the operations and management piece and also leading the instructional program. But it's, it's a lot for one person to be able to do really effectively. And so we believe that this improvement strategist position allows us to take a new innovative, fresh look at the needs of our staff and students. And so I see this person really helping Barb and Dave support the staff because we, we're really good at rolling things out in public education. And then the part that I think is challenging is going back and inspecting what we expect, but also providing the support and differentiating our staff learning the same way we do our student learning. So that's a big hope and part of our vision in creating this, this position moving forward. And I'll just add that I thought this was like a really creative, new, unique idea that was just happening here in Scarborough. But I was talking with the superintendent slash principal in Old Orchard Beach, and they're doing something similar at their middle school and bringing in this kind of like lead of teacher and learning there. So we've been sharing job descriptions and I think they might have already hired, but we're hoping to post that position soon as an anticipated opening, again, because the market's really competitive. So. Jackie?
I'm trying to formulate a question that is intelligent. The bottom line for me is that class size has always been a big deal with me, as well as adequate supervision. Anybody who knows me knows I fought for principals at the middle school, assistant principals at the middle school, and building principals at the K2 schools. So that's important. Class size has always been important. So I guess I'm asking, I hear what you're saying about this position and how important it has become in our schools. But can you weigh that against smaller class size? I don't know. I'm only throwing that out because if you're interested in education, you know that class size has been predominant in educating children for years. And the fewer children that an individual teacher has to deal with, especially today when we're talking about the numbers of children who become aggressive and special needs, I just wonder if there's a way to measure that.
So there's actually a lot of ways to measure that. And when we're talking about increasing our class sizes, it brings them up to 21 at the middle school, which is still very manageable and is within our range. Before we even looked at numbers, we talked about what, what is our range of acceptable class size? Because although class size matters, it only matters if you have a highly skilled teacher. And so if our teachers aren't getting the support that they need, doesn't matter if there's 30 kids in the class or 10 kids in the class, if they're not, they need to be effective in their instructional practices. And so we believe that that professional support and being able to better support our teachers is more, I think, is a better, will get a better return on our investment than if there were four less kids in the class. So I don't know if I share that same exact view with everyone. I see lots of heads nodding. But another really interesting thing to look at, because I know we have lots of researchers in the room, is, you know, John Hattie's meta-analysis of what are the 150 things that impact or influence student achievement? And when you look at class size, it's like 35 on the list. So again, that's looking at it in isolation. So yeah, when we have really skilled teachers first, the number one influencer of student achievement and lower class sizes, then that's a benefit. But I would, I would, I would make the trade, if you will, to have slightly higher class sizes, which are still very manageable and better support for our teachers.
And the, the support piece, as we described earlier, is we're asking at every phase level, teachers to change their, shift their practices in line with that DIP now, David. So we are flying the airplane. It's not, you know, if things, all things were static, we still need that position in order to support teachers, but we really are asking teachers to shift some of their practices. And that just requires additional support. And having these folks at the phase levels will provide quite a bit of that support for them.
And I would just add to what Monique's saying about the shifting of the practice. It's shifting practice in a really accelerated way. And so I think that's another important factor to consider. We really think that as, to effectively make these changes, we need to have that support.
You're not increasing class size. You're moving 11 classes to 11 instead of 11 to 12.
And that's fine. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to it at all. I'm seeking information because I want what is best for our students and our teachers. And I want to hear the professionals talk about the impact that it's going to have on our students and our teachers when you compare to class size and some other things. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Great. Jody?
I think that's a really important point that Kelly just made that sort of highlights that we, because I would hate for us to be using the terms increased class size when in all actuality, it's the same exact class size that they currently are used to.
Yeah.
That group is just moving to the next phase level, which currently has one additional classroom. They just won't have that next year.
Right.
So they will be staying in the same sized class that they currently are.
That's a really important point. So right now, our sixth grade classes on average are 20.5 students. And in seventh grade, it's 20.8 students. And then in eighth grade, it's 20 students. And next year, what we're projecting is 20.6 in sixth grade, 20.5 in seventh grade, and 20.8 in eighth grade. So some classes of 20, some classes of 21. We won't be splitting any children. So that's a good point. Mary?
Oh, I just got a question a little bit. Can you mention restorative practices? And I just wondered, what does that entail?
Restorative practices?
Yes.
What that means is having students who might have difficulty communicating back and forth to sit down and solve their problem together, rather than saying at a model, well, there's been harm that one person has caused the other, we're going to separate them. And it's impossible to separate them in every instance. So it's be able to open up that line of communication and teach them, if you have a problem, these are your resources and let's sit down and solve the problem.
And then you work with circles of teachers.
That's right. And then our biggest concern with that is for someone to sit down and have that conversation with the student. That they need the skills, the tools to be able to create that, that relationship with the student so that the student would feel comfortable maybe coming to them to report something or to sit down to help solve the problem. So the relationships between our, our staff and our students are very important. And so each, each week, we have specific time allotted that is during our home room schedule, the time on our present schedule, that we designate as that's the time to sit down and have that conversation with your students. And it, it might not be something that's really deep. It might be something just to find someone in common. And then as we go around the circle and we share something in common, I might look at someone that I might never have shared that. So it creates the relationship staff to student, but also student to student as well.
And then if you, because it sounds like you were going to have an advisory period as well, or some kind of advisory, so would that person kind of take on that role?
Correct.
As well as kind of being that person that can help the kids?
Yes.
And it's really about moving away from a punishment kind of mindset and more about a growth mindset. It allows us to keep our students in school rather than sending them out, you know, on suspensions or even putting them in in-school suspension and working through issues because we know if they're not in school, they can't learn. So it really is, it works well when it's done well, but it does require a lot of staff training and development.
And with those suspensions, there's nothing to store. The student may go away. There's a person in the school, they might come back even more angry with that student that they had had the conflict with. And this gets past that conflict. And their lifetime skills, which are very important.
A beautiful way to make it is summarize for me is in the system of discipline where we only provide punishments and consequences. We teach students what not to do, but we don't, we miss the opportunity to teach students what to do. And so restorative practices takes it to the next level on how to problem solve when you are having an issue with someone or when an incident occurs. We work with the students to let them know that that's not appropriate, but also provide them with the skills and the tools so that they can learn what the right thing is to do and how to do it.
So I think Kelly had a question and then Jackie?
I heard your timer.
You have, that was the presentation.
That was the presentation. Okay, good.
Two minutes and nine seconds.
So you're shifting and not, and not expanding the number of classrooms. Does that help your space crunch now? Because I know you have teachers in closets and on cards.
It would be one room to use for a teacher on a card.
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations. Good work. Thank you.
Jackie?
My question is, is the technique you're describing, do we use it with youngsters who isolate themselves? In other words, the youngster who stands by themselves at recess or wants to sit by themselves at lunch or comes into a classroom and after everybody's seated, they take the seat furthest away from everybody else?
Well, so we're, actually, we have, one of our PLTs is developing a mentoring model to help address students who are experiencing some of that isolation. I don't know if Kelly, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Sure. It's partly that, but I think there are a number of reasons we would identify a student who needs kind of a positive, an additional positive adult connection in their life. And it is really closely connected to what Dave described, but tapping into community resources to create those relationships. I think to your question, that's a PLT. That was a teacher-generated idea. It's actually a lot of ed techs who do, for example, lunch duty or recess duty and have that unique perspective of 225 students every single day. And so those students are identified and on the radar and creating opportunities for them to connect with a caring adult. I think additionally to your point, the restorative practices at K5, because the emphasis is on teaching expected behavior, it's a natural, it's a natural fit. It's very much in line with the work that we are already doing. And there are components of it that we can work from to, to continue that phase-to-phase collaboration and connection.
And I think at K2 especially, we, we have done some restorative justice work as well with community circles and so talking to kids about, you know, when, when this happens in the classroom, this is how people feel. And do you want people to feel that way? You want them to, you know, and how do you want to feel in the classroom? So it's, it's really, you know, not only teaching them what we want them to do, but, but why? You know, the personal connections between kids about what that, what your behavior does to other people in the classroom. So, you know, that, it has been happening at K2 as well.
And that's a lot of the, the social emotional work that all of our schools are doing to really talk about empathy and compassion and as part of the teaching of the child. Donna?
I just want to compliment this center for looking for efficiencies and ways to swap out retirement positions or other needed positions. But I've also watched as for the past several years, some of our K8 schools have asked for nothing and nothing again the next year and nothing again the year after. And at some point, there's going to need to be, you know, some opportunities for you to ask for things. I know we're really trying to put all our efforts into the, you know, the high school level and that's admirable on your part for, you know, for being willing to give up so that the high school can, you know, possibly get what they really need to have, to have at this time, but.
Well, I think that's where our K-12 work comes in, in that phase, that second phase of looking at the student-centered budget and we're prioritizing things, you know, as a district. Because I too, like you, believe that it shouldn't be a cycle, like it's the middle school's turn and then it's the high school's turn and then it's, it needs to be needs-based. And so that's really what our focus is, but also knowing that you can, a lot of times we can make improvements with our existing resources if we just realign or if we, you know, analyze what, what it is we need in order to make that growth or that change happen. So I feel that that was really balanced this year in our conversation. I don't know if you guys feel the same. Okay. David, do you have the clipper?
I do.
All right.
Can you take your work?
Time for the high school. There is coffee if anyone wants to have coffees.
Julie, could we potentially shift our five-minute break to now?
Are you ready for a five-minute break now? David, do you mind if we bump up the five?
So, good afternoon. I envision how everybody's hopped up on caffeine. I'm going to go about 20 questions compared to three of the other people. They're shifting, including Mr. Gage over there, ready for us. So I look forward to this. So thank you for the opportunity to, to speak with you today regarding the impact of the investments that you've supported aboard last year and some of what we're looking for mission critical investments for this year. If you take a look at the slide that we have on the overhead screen for you, I think one thing I want to define for you, and you appear to be saying this throughout our presentation, is we've got a learner-centered focus on the first slide. And the reason for that is oftentimes we don't talk to you about a student-centered focus, student-centered learning focus, but we've been trying to balance that with the resources and needs and supports in place for staff to be able to implement what needs to be in place for students. So Mr. Alphasine is calling the phrase a learner-centered focus, which I think is idealistic for what we want to do here at this phase of the line. That first portion of that slide will capture some of the investments from this year that really have had a great impact on Scarborough High School. Laptop programs in the second year of implementation. We spent an enormous amount of time, again, this year, working on teachers successfully implementing in their curriculum and in the classroom with the help of Jen Adams, our structural coaches, Monique and Catherine, as director of teaching and learning. I feel like we were growing groups and balance in year two. The student-centered learning focus is part of that learner-centered focus with our advisory program and our academic enrichment and support time. I know I've spoken to you about this in the past, but our advisory program and A East really provides some resources in Bedouin the school day that we think are hugely important for students' academic and personal development. And I'll highlight those a little bit in the next slide. Director of teaching and learning, that, that position is going to be, that name is going to be changed. You heard Kelly and Julie referencing that earlier, but really Catherine Ruby has been hugely instrumental in guiding our staff, navigating them through these shifts in our practices. We have a lot of work that needs to be planned. We need staff, need to be supportive on how to best grow in their practices, instructional practices, curriculum, assessment. So she has done a great job of supporting our staff and working with our teacher leaders. And in the staff development time, I know that we were very fortunate to be supported, provided, we provided the staff development time this year through our late starts and some of our additional time for NEAS. But we have our performance evaluation of professional growth, time that we've had to use. We've had PLT, NEAS self-study, specific content area curriculum development. We're shifting to a proficiency-based education and we have efficiency-based diploma requirements that are for current eighth graders, next year's ninth graders. So staff development was critical to be able to provide supports to shift and grow our staff in those areas. The new schedule is in phase one. The academic enrichment and support time is tied directly to providing students within the school day, the opportunity to meet with staff, whether it's enrichment or support for all kinds of reasons that students typically have struggled to find time to meet with staff. We have students who are very busy. They have challenging schedules. Oftentimes they can't meet before or after school. And sometimes our study halls don't align with our teachers' prep time. So 35 minutes between the first and second period of each day gives them a chance to get that extra help to finish up that quiz, perhaps to engage in some enrichment activities and just connect with their teachers. One day out of the week is our advisory program. Our advisory program is really, we've got two strategically important pieces to this advisory program that our school has desperately needed. One is to have another caring adult in the lives of our students that can guide, support them, and encourage them throughout their high school career. The second piece is to have activities put in place that provide the academic, social, emotional, and health and wellness needs of our students. And we're starting to see some of the benefits from that all the way through. Phase One of our new schedule is this year. And we wanted to put these two components in place and grow these, learn from what we have in place, and make whatever adjustments were necessary. Other important investments that have had great dividends are our new staff. As you know, we didn't have enough staff to support some of our existing programs. Oftentimes, we were turning students away from courses that they wanted to sign up for because we didn't have enough of the teaching resources. Our new staff last year that were hired for this year allowed us, one, to better support the existing needs that we had for academic programs and courses, put support in place for some of our new programs, our AP computer programming, robotics, a number of courses that we've had on the planning stages but have never been able to implement them. In place and we can continue to use. So implementation of the proficiency-based education, we have a workshop where you've heard all the different components for proficiency-based education. Bottom line to that is it's a shift in some of our practices, instructional practices, curriculum, how we assess students. So important for us is to have the time to be able to do that. And then there's another factor here that, for those of you who have taught before, know that when you've had a system that's been in place since 1992 for a schedule, and you've been used to a certain amount of time, a certain amount of days, and now we're shifting to 75 minutes every other day, that's going to change how you deliver your curriculum, how you can have those digestible chunks of content. At the same time, we're aligning a proficiency-based education and standards. Thank you. And we now have new assessment practices. All of that is going to require time. Time for staff to be able to grow and make the most of the new schedule. So professional learning time for us at the high school will also be essential next year. An improvement strategist, which was our director of teaching and learning this year, which is the role that you've heard referenced with, with the work that we have already been accomplished, have already accomplished, excuse me, this year, and with the growth as a district in our proficiency-based education, it's going to be, I think, highly critical that the high school have this person in place. We need staff and, and teacher leaders to be able to have somebody to guide them through this work, to work with our instructional coaches, with Monique and the other phase-level instructional coaches to make sure that as we implement things, teachers have the resources and the support on how to successfully make those shifts. And so the improvement strategist is one of our priorities for next year in addition to professional learning time. The internship and academy coordinator is very exciting for us. If you attended this morning's School and Business Partnership, for as long as I've been attending that for the last two or three years, we have had, just like with the graduation requirements, this need for somebody to coordinate at our phase level with all the resources our community provides. And that coordination is not just connecting the resources to our teachers here, but it's creating a program that will be a part of our graduation requirements. Our graduation requirements now are going to require students to have a personal learning experience that they're keeping their digital portfolio for, for the four years that they're at Scarborough High School. Those personal learning experiences can be service learning projects, internships, apprenticeships, taking a college class, volunteering, you know, those kinds of rich personal experiences that don't just happen in the confines of Scarborough High School, but happen outside. So we have a wealth of resources in this community that want to partner with us. And this internship position will be somebody who will coordinate that work. Also, I think what's very interesting is part of the internship program would be a curriculum tied to some of those really important qualities that the local community businesses are telling us that students need to have in place. Part like the career education, resume writing, how you interview, those qualities that, that businesses are looking for, employees, problem solvers, their team people that are able to work well and communicate well with others. So that curriculum will be a part of the work that's done with this internship and academy coordinator. And the last piece for that is NATH, which is the National Academic, excuse, National Academy Foundation, provides a model for us to grow career academies. So whether it's in technology or any of the other choices they have, they'll provide for us a model on how to best create those types of programs and offerings. And we can grow it from the resources we have in this community. And then lastly, we have, right now, we have a .8 librarian, who is fantastic. Barbara referenced her earlier. She's doing a wonderful job of supporting the middle school and the high school. But we have 1,000 students and we have a .8 librarian. NEASC requires for schools with 400 or more students to have a full-time librarian. But even if it wasn't a NEASC requirement, we need a live full-time librarian at the high school to grow our learning coffins and to provide the resources for staff and students that we need. In addition, for our 1,000 students right now, we have a part-time student assistance counselor. So many times I've worked with our student assistance counselor, who doesn't just work with substance abuse counseling, but also works on the other social emotional needs of our students. And oftentimes, supporting our social workers has, she has wonderful ideas for some programs, but just doesn't have the time to, to support individual student needs and put some of these programs and offerings in place that will help students with their social and emotional issues. So we're asking to go from .5 to this position to full-time. So in essence, I think at the high school, we are really a school in transition. We're shifting some practices. I have to finish by saying this. We have a great staff who are dedicated to our students. We have fantastic students who are high achievers. And we have a very supportive community that has high expectations. With this growth and the shift in our practices, we need support. And we need to make sure that as we're shifting our practices that we're doing it very well. And so a lot of what we've been asking for, for this particular phase, for this particular phase of the budget, has been rethinking our budget needs as compared to what we had and planned prior to this year and focusing on those things I just described.
Thank you, David. Any questions? Kelly?
I just have one question, and it's not even necessarily for me, but you may know we've spent several lifetimes looking at schedules lately, school start times in particular, and, and looking at other high schools and how they set up their day. More than a handful, two to three that I saw, have their A East period first thing in the morning rather than between classes. So can you just explain a little bit why ours is between one and two?
Sure. Part of, we looked at the schedule and we talked about the best place to put that time. We were actually thinking along the lines of, just like the recent initiative to look at school start time. So when our students come into school, if you look at their typical day, to have a class period and then go to your A East, you're getting a change between period one and two. We have a chance to shift gears a little bit, maybe downshift, work on some of those things that you need to do, whether it's getting academic enrichment support or just working on some of your homework or meeting with your advisory. Then you go to your period three class, you have another class, and then the, excuse me, the period two class. And then the next period, period three next year is lunch. So you have a class, you have A East or advisory, you have a class, and then period three will be the lunch period, even though you're still going to have a class. And then you finish the day with a class. So some of the schools that I've talked to and that we researched said that it was, it sometimes posed a challenge when you started or ended your day in advisory or A East. A lot of it, I think, is tied to where students are at that particular part of the day, you know, emotionally and physically and mentally. So we were trying to capture in our new schedule a way to provide a less stressful schedule and also timely breaks in that day that benefited them emotionally and physically and mentally. So that's why we went between periods one and two.
Thank you.
Mary, and then Jackie?
I just had a question. I know last year in the budget, there was talk of, you know, adding some teachers to fulfill the needs for the, you know, for the eight-period day. And so I just wondered, so how are you managing without those, you know, extra teachers that, for your thinking, you know, were a possibility?
That's a great question. We, so obviously, when we were looking at the needs, we had five FTEs in last year's budget, which allowed us some of that capacity. We looked at the existing, when we were looking at our resources we clearly had, we looked at the existing class sizes and where we needed to grow. And we believe that right now with the room that we have and our new offerings and with our electives and the current class sizes, that next year when we go over an eight-block schedule, we have the capacity, but we'll have more accurate information and data in the next year as to exactly where those students land. Because our survey of the students last year told us that almost 70% of them said that they were going to choose an additional class, it would be an elective, and not another core class or study hall. But the reality behind what they're going to select, what they said in the survey, won't be realized until we finish with our signups in the next couple of weeks. So we believe we have the capacity right now for those students to take those courses they've said that they're going to take and sign up for without creating the same scenario we were in last year when we had to turn students away from certain classes. And next year's data, if it demonstrates to us that we're busting out of the seams in those areas that we predicted we might, then it would give us the rationale to come back to the table and say, we need this teaching position in this particular content area because this is where the students are signing up. And that's now where our need is.
And I think one of the things that David and the leadership team at the high school did was, again, you make a plan two years ago, but is that plan still the best plan now? And so it was kind of a reassessment of, okay, it'd be great to offer more options to students, but is that really the most critical need? And so through our, through the budget process and the hard work that the leadership team has done at the high school, they were able to reassess that. And so I think we always are going to be, you know, planning for short-term goals but also long-term goals. But our job as school leaders is to constantly be reassessing that. And so, again, like the middle school, I'm super excited about the work that the high school has done because it really has, they've really pushed themselves to think critically about what is the, what is the best, the immediate need and the biggest bang for our buck when it comes to our investments this year.
No, I agree. I think the positions that have chosen that, I think are so needed.
Jackie?
Over the years, you've heard off and on that youngsters are unable to do band because of their schedule. Is that still the case of students who wish to have band? Have difficulty with the schedule?
I think in general terms, we have students at times because of the demands of the schedule that we've had with only seven periods in the graduation requirements. And some students want to take additional science or additional math because of the nature of what they want to do outside of, once they've graduated. They've, they've at times chosen not to take an art or a band because the schedule didn't have the flexibility or capacity. So that is, you know, it's anecdotal, but that is true, what's been said. This schedule now allows more flexibility and a larger capacity because students can take an additional class. And also, the new graduation requirements that we've created allows much more flexibility in terms of students being able to satisfy their graduation requirements, but also take those elective courses that they're passionate about or they just want to try.
When I taught at the high school, we had three lunch periods. And the first two lunch periods went band. And the band all went to the third lunch. I don't know how they worked that out, but that was, you know, I taught at the high school for 12, 13 years. And I never heard anybody say that they had a conflict. So I didn't know how we worked that out at Scarborough High School.
Actually, the new schedule is going to allow us, we're moving course from outside of school day into the school day. Students can take their class during the actual schedule. So there's been some shifts in some things that have been moved in the past outside of the schedule because we didn't have the room for some students to take those things. So it's been a lot of advantages. So between the new graduation requirements and the new schedule, we really have, I think, provided more opportunity, more flexibility, more capacity for our students.
Well, and Jackie too, one of the things that we're talking about as we're, you know, planning for the future is, what does a school day look like for each individual student? I mean, even as we talk about adjusting our start times, if we go to an 8:50 start, students who want to access Katz or Westbrook Vocational Technical School will have to be on a slightly different schedule. So their day might start earlier and end earlier. Or they may have, because their day starts and ends earlier, they may have an opportunity to take an additional course if that's something that they choose to do. But we're going to have to, once we have that start time decision, really dig down and say like, okay, so what does this really mean for all students? And I just think, to the point that the young man made last night at the town council meeting, the way we think about this thing called school is really evolving and shifting. And it might not be that all students have four years of high school. They might be able to accelerate their earning of the essential credits or demonstrating proficiency in three years or three and a half years instead of four. And so we're talking about different dual enrollment options that students can have. So maybe they're leaving Scarborough High School as a sophomore in college because they've obtained that many credits while they're enrolled. So there's a lot of, a lot of things in motion. But the, the one thing I do know is that we are not going to be able to provide our students all the experiences that they need in six hours and 25 minutes, or that they want, rather, I should say, in six hours and 25 minutes. So that's also part of our thinking, is being like really flexible around what does a school day look like for each individual student. And the graduation requirements that the high school is working on, it's a huge step towards that and are really exciting. And I imagine, you know, the future of school being that every student has an individualized education plan, not just special education students, that we're really customizing education to each individual student.
Well, I've always felt that a student who wanted to be in the band and, and had to choose something else to meet the requirements were being short-changed because there's been an investment in music education on behalf of the family over the years. And now they get to perform, so to speak, at a higher level. And somehow, we're preventing that. And, and I think anything that we can do through their schedule to make that opportunity available so that they can continue that is important.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions about the high school? All right. So who's on deck? Joanne Sizemore?
Yes, I have the next four slides of different balls that I juggle.
I think I was following along with the...
Oh, you're done, Joanne.
I'm done.
Everybody's been asking for pages like crazy for Joanne Sizemore. Health services starts on page 47.
What he's got is... So, health services. Health services really has changed dramatically in schools. You know, the primary purpose of having our health services is to ensure that our kids are healthy and safe during the school day. And, and our nurses do a lot of good work with flu clinics, bringing those into the schools for both staff and students, working with the VNA. They do all of our trainings for bus drivers, first responders in the office, special ed ed techs. They, they do all that training for us for CPR for those people, which is a huge saving to our district and having them provide those kind of trainings. And so for the last four years, we've been working and thinking and looking in and researching a management system. Because up until this year, everything was done handwritten in a book. And, you know, all, when someone moved, getting their health record all together, handwritten. And there's so many, there's different programs out there. And one of our school nurses, Melissa Martinez, who had worked in Texas, came up here and said, you entered by hand and was just shocked? And so kind of encouraged us to kind of get on board and start thinking. So we spent a year of planning and reviewing and looking at different programs, and we decided on Health Office Anywhere. And Melissa and Patty Bolduc have been our lead trainers with the program. And now everything is getting online. And they've entered some of the records. When a kid comes to the clinic, they go into the system, they chart it that way. Kids' records are in there, immunizations are in there. When a kid... When a kid moves, they click a button and the health record comes out with all of that information. There's still more work to be done because besides the immunizations, they are also looking at different needs that kids have and how they track them, how they chart it. The program is able to send an email to the parent when the medication is getting low at school as a reminder. So there's a lot of benefits, and we're in the process of continuing our work with it. The challenge is, is what is a school nurse today? And instead of putting it all up there, I went, and I was, when I was preparing the slide, I went, page forty-eight. All you have to do is read page forty-eight, and that's what a school nurse does today with diabetes, severe medical conditions that are in our school. Concussions has been a huge, huge problem for our students and even some of our staff and how they manage that. Medication for students is, you know, I would say, most of the buildings might have over a hundred kids who might be on medication, and they are dispensing that medication at the schools. So instead of writing it all down, please read what a school nurse does today because there's so many perceptions out there probably with the public that say, oh, the kid comes to the, comes to the clinic, has a headache, they give them some Tylenol, or, you know, they take their fever, or, but it really is very complicated today, you know, what school nurses are doing in our schools.
And I would just say, that's not an exhaustive list. Of course, imaginary boo-boos are not on there. And also, we have some nurses who ride the bus with students who need that level of care, so they're riding to and from, you know, home to school with the students as well.
Okay, Jackie?
How many students in our system are not immunized?
I would have that information, I think the nurses do have that information, we keep track of all of that. Because if a parent doesn't want to immunize their child, they have to sign a release saying that they're not going to do that.
Right. I think it's something that the board may wish, not who, but how many.
Okay.
Can you jot that on your index card, Jack, so then we can get that data for you? Thanks.
Any other questions before I move on?
I just have one question. Is there a required ratio, like occupational therapists, or school nurses, and I don't think close to it, because it seems like we have a very small number of nurses and LPNs and medical assistants for our student body.
I'm sure, I don't know off the top of my head, but when we have, we have two nurses at the high school. We have one-point-eight nurses, one-point-six nurses at, excuse me, one-point-eight nurses at the middle school. At Wentworth, we have one nurse, one LPN, and we have a medical assistant who helps out and goes between the schools. And we have one nurse for Blue Point and Eight Corners. The nurse at Wentworth goes to Pleasant Hill.
Yeah, it just makes me nervous not to have one in each building.
It just, they travel a lot, and I was going to get them a four-wheeler to go off the eastern trail, and get the Blue Point, it'd be a lot easier.
Again.
Yes.
That's not in the budget.
I could cheaper than a staff member, though.
It's in the budget, it's just not in the school budget.
Well, yes, but we could build a bridge from Black Point Road down to the Co-op at High Point, that saves miles.
Any other questions? Okay, Adult Ed, page ninety-eight. Getting carried away, really. Ms. Adult Ed, we've had some changes in that we have a part-time director who has done a really, a great job going out into the community and building some of these programs. Our CNA program, this morning they were talking about Genesis, was with the school businesses. We had partnered with them, done CNA programs there. We're now with Piper Shores, being Veterans Home and Genesis that's up there. Last year, we graduated forty-eight people with CNA in one year. And so we're also working with Piper Shores right now. They're building a new facility and are in need of medication, certified residential medication aids, and we have programs to certify and do those kind of trainings, and pharmacy techs and so forth. So the director, Joan Tremruth, has been working with, very heavily with Piper Shores right now in the main Veterans Home and continuing. We have two, three classes that are going right now for CNA. So we're very pleased with how that is going and helping people to see some benefits in getting people employed in jobs that are needed. English language learners, we had a small program here in Scarborough, and so Joan connected with Portland, who had overflows. And we have a program here now with maybe twenty, twenty-two people. Now, we offer day and evening classes, and the Rock Church, because we needed a space during the day, the Rock Church has offered us a space there, and English language learner classes are offered there. College and career counseling is offered to all adults with an online career assessment, and people who are thinking about going back to college, starting college, don't know what to, what avenue, she's done a lot of promotion with that, and she's been to Main Help for people who might work there, who have a high school diploma and want to know how I can get into a college and, a college courses and what my assessment would be before I got there. We do a lot with credit recovery for students at the high school and people who are looking to get their high school diploma. It's no longer called the GED, it's called HISA, and it's an online program that you have to go through different classes before you can take the test for HISA. And so those programs are continuing. Plus, last year, we offered over a hundred enrichment classes at people in the community, such as painting is a big one, guitar playing, they've had different languages, computer class for seniors, all of those types of programs are offered through our Adult Ed program. Jackie?
Are any of our high school students enrolled in any of the certificate programs?
I think you need to have a high school diploma before you can begin the programs, like a CNA, you know, for, under Adult Ed. But I know that if a student at the high school was at Westbrook Regional, Westbrook Hope, they are able to obtain a CNA certificate there. But in the Adult Ed program, it's adults.
Thank you. Joanne?
Yeah?
How do we promote those classes?
So we still, we have an online, you know, we have a section on our website, online. We have a brochure that goes to every single home. We weren't going to do that, but we heard from so many people who said, I look for that booklet, you know, I keep it in the car, I don't throw it in the garbage, you know, and that's where we're getting most of our signups. She promotes it with, you know, when she's going to Piper Shores, she'll leave some there, those brochures, the thanks, that's how we're out there.
There's also an online portal through the Maine Adult Ed Association, so that if I live in South Portland, but I'm interested in a course, I can go on that statewide portal and find out what adult ed organization around me might have that class.
That's what I was going to ask, are we competing with other local
Yes.
high schools competitively, it seems like, because there's.
Well, Bitterford, Saco, and Old Orchard have a very extensive program. They offer a lot of classes during the day. They would offer like a math class, a Latin English class for people to get maybe extra help before they took the after placer test that you need to get into a community college. We offer those maybe at night, but some of them are online.
And I don't know if it's because of where I live, but I get their
Yes.
brochure at my house.
Yeah. Old Orchard has been upping and, you know, and so instead of fighting them, they're all decided to share because the state might be looking at regionalizing adult ed programs, and so that might be a direction that might be coming in a couple of years.
And so if that happens in a couple of years, do we have the facility to sort of take that on?
We don't have the space.
Not during the day.
I think Old Orchard has an empty space because their enrollment's very low.
Right. We, that's why the English language learner program, we had, we used a classroom at Wentworth for a while, and then they needed the space back, and, you know, having the adults come here and so forth, so she found the Rock Church. For a while, we didn't have a place to offer CNA as she was building the program. At one point, we had a hospital bed at Blue Point in one of the extra classrooms. You know, it worked out well, but it still wasn't the facility of being in a main Veterans Home or Piper Shores to do that kind of program.
I think one of the things that Joan is really cognizant of is trying to fill the niche where the need is, like with the medical workforce training programs, that's such a huge growth industry right now. And, you know, so Joan is sort of zeroing in and saying, well, where can we fill a need that, you know, another class in elementary guitar doesn't really matter because you can take that anywhere?